Good evening. This seventy-fourth meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Please turn off all cell phones or put them on vibrate. Tonight's invocation will be delivered by Pastor Annie Marie Richards from the Emmanuel Episcopal Church. Following the invocation, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, distinguished guests and friends, and all of these awesome football players, I bring you greetings from the people of Emmanuel Episcopal Church. I'm honored to be invited to pray blessing upon your meeting today. Let us reflect for a moment on the work that is before you. The work you do is important, and you know that, and so do we, the citizens of this city. The work that you do in this chamber has the power to change lives, to transform Baltimore, to restore dignity, increase safety, and raise up and educate citizens who will have the skills necessary to work for the good of all people. This city's houses of worship know something about meetings. Yes, we meet in our magnificent sanctuaries, temples, and mosques, but there is more. Every day of the week, you will find in the basements of these buildings other meetings. These simple, subterranean rooms may not have the ornate decorations of this chamber with the glorious splendor of the stained glass, or carved wood, or ancient texts, but they are places of transformation and renewal every single day of the week in our city. At Emmanuel, we host AANA, CMA meetings, and we see lives transformed at each and every one of those gatherings. But there is another group that meets in our basement, and you need to know about them: Hope. Helping oppressed people excel is a fellowship of men and women who have previously been incarcerated. They are veterans of our jails and prisons, of public safety compact and safe and sound, of our neighborhoods and of our streets. Each week, they meet to learn, to grow, to support one another. They avail themselves of job training and monthly bus passes, and they give back to this city through backpack drives, public advocacy, and support for the communities in which they grew up. I'm proud to say that in two years of Program of Hope, not one of them has been rearrested. Not one. It is not easy work, and I want you to know something about these citizens. They are modeling the way forward for all of us. We may not share a record of criminal activity, but we ought to share in their steadfast dedication to the daily work of transformation and the importance of extending a hand to others along the way. Whether the path you are on has twelve steps or one hundred steps, the way forward is by following the example of the men and women of Hope and never giving up the dream of new life and new opportunities. These brave brothers and sisters have taught me that whether we are traveling towards sobriety or freedom, or to the renewal of this great city, we must commit ourselves to daily, hourly work. There are no days off. There is no time to backslide or deny the struggle, but there is also no day that we must face alone. None of us walks alone, even on the days when it feels like no one is on your side. So as you take up the work before you tonight, remember "Hope," and know that transformation and renewal is not only possible but probable, and that you do not do this work alone. So let us pray. Most gracious and loving God, we pray your blessing upon this meeting. We pray your Spirit of justice, love, and mercy be present here. We pray your Spirit of perseverance and faith be present here. We pray your Spirit, your power, your inspiration be present here, and that these your servants will work together for the healing and building up of the city, for the transformation of this city, for the renewal of Baltimore. May this gathering be a time of holy honesty, of diligent work, of joyous celebration, of respect for the dignity and worth of every human being. May this evening be holy, good, and peaceful, and may we all rise again tomorrow, committed to the work that has been put before us, encouraged by the examples of our brothers and sisters, and upheld by the loving presence of God, in whose holy name we make our prayers this night. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Thank you. Tonight's showcase Baltimore presenters are John and Shirley Billy.
I'm John Billy. Council President Brandon Scott, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, and all council members. On behalf of the Billy family, we'd like to extend our thanks to each and every one of you. I'm so sorry that the wife couldn't be here tonight because of a disabled stroke she received. The second worst thing that ever happened to her in her life. The first thing was during the fifties, just for having a baby by a black man. The state came and arrested her, put her in jail, convicted her under a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-year-old law that carried a penalty eighteen months to five years in the state penitentiary. The very next morning after the baby was born, the state came and took it from her, put it in orphanage for two full years. That's how long it took us to get it back. Shirley was the only person that ever was convicted of this heinous crime. But a major change happened in our state and city. One, it was stopped, taken off the books. Two, it provided a better position with blacks and whites combining. Three, a great part of history in the city and the state. All these things was against her during these times. The city, the state, discrimination, segregation, racism, even our own family. State of Maryland and the state of Baltimore didn't allow interracial marriage during them times. We had to go to Washington DC to get married. The authorities here didn't appreciate interracial couples. The public, they had mixed feelings about it. People would always tell us, "This would never, never, ever last." I'm proud to say, this year is our sixty-first happy anniversary. Thank you. I'm glad to say, through all her braveness, all of her courage, all of her skill, fighting for her civil right, as a husband, I will truly say, my wife Shirley and Billy stood her ground, and I stood there with her. Isn't God great? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Billy. Tonight's youth showcase will be the 2019 Baltimore City Football Coaches Association's All-City Team. We wanted to congratulate all of our student athletes, and just for the council members, don't run out of here when the meeting's over. We will take a picture in the chambers immediately following tonight's meeting. So with the players in the balcony, please rise, and gentlemen, you want to come up now?
Hello.
You gotta pull the mic up.
Right there? That's good?
Yeah, that's good.
Hello, my name is Malkis Muzon. I'm, I am here representing the Baltimore Coaches Association All-Star City Teams. My teammates are upstairs in the balcony. We are a group of athletes from various schools throughout Baltimore City. We all have at least a 2.5 GPA in Excel on and off the field. Here are a bunch of, here are a couple of other athletes that is excellent on the field as well, here to introduce themselves.
How y'all doing? My name is Eric Quinn. I go to Polytechnic Institute.
Kyrie Buchanan, go to Digital Harbor High.
How y'all doing today? My name is Xavier Shaw, go to Maryville High School.
How y'all doing? My name is Corey Coleman. I go to Patterson High School.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Cowser. I go to Baltimore City College High School.
My name, Deion Cruz Harris. I go to Dunbar High School.
Thank you, gentlemen, and congratulations. Roll call. The clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Roziger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the December 5, 2019 proceedings are on the council members' desks.
Without objection, the Journal will be adopted. The Journal is adopted. Executive nominations.
EA 19-0258 Patricia Roberts, Member, Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees, District Six.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee.
EA 19-0259 Tiffany Wengate, Member, Civilian Review Board, District Eleven.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. Bills to be introduced.
City Council Bill 19-0476 Tobacco Distribution Conforming Modifications. For the purpose of conforming the city health code with certain amendments made by Chapter 396, 2019 Laws of Maryland prohibiting the distribution of certain tobacco products to individuals under twenty-one, providing for an exception for active military personnel, defining certain terms, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0477 Solid Waste Surcharges Exemption. For the purpose of creating an exemption for any solid waste surcharge imposed by City Code Article 23, Subtitle XI for solid waste that is destined for final disposal outside of Baltimore City, defining certain terms, conforming and clarifying related provisions generally relating to solid waste surcharges, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, Reisinger, Costello, Burnett, Cohen, Bullock, Pinkett, Middleton.
Please add Councilman Schleifer, Councilman Henry, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Roziger.
Mr. President, as I said at the luncheon, the purpose of this bill is to create an exemption, exemption from any solid waste surcharge imposed for solid waste that is destined for final disposal outside of Baltimore City. This bill will help decrease solid waste going to Briscoe, Bresco, and the landfill. And, Mr. President, and members of the council, there's a company that's in my district and also in Councilman Costello's district that transports at least fifty thousand tons of solid waste to Bresco, and with this bill, that fifty thousand will not go to Bresco. And I appreciate my colleagues who co-sponsored the legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0478 Curb Cuts Restoration. For the purpose of establishing a process for the city of Baltimore to restore unneeded, unused, or otherwise abandoned curb cuts. Sponsors, Dorsey, Burnett, Cohen, Henry, Bullock, Middleton, Clark, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. You ever drive down the street, and you try to park your car, and where you want to park the car, it looks like there's supposed to be a driveway there, there's a curb cut, and there's a little ramp that goes up onto the sidewalk, but there's only just a building there, or a yard there, and you get confused, you don't know whether I can park my car there or not. We got a lot of these around Baltimore. We got them in neighborhoods, in front of houses, we got them in commercial districts, in front of businesses, and industrial buildings. This bill creates a process, creates an opportunity for the city to say, "That doesn't belong there," and say, "Let's make sure that that gets fixed and get the property owners to get that restored back into a proper curb." And this will help not only to just help these parking issues, but also to manage stormwater runoff so that it can be caught by grass that might otherwise be there, instead of just running off into drains. And this will be good for pedestrian safety, where every time there's an opportunity for a car to drive up onto a sidewalk, that's an opportunity for a pedestrian to get hit by that car, just walking down the street minding their own business. So it just turns out we don't have a process in order to convert these curb cuts back into a regular curb, reclaiming the curb. Thank you, Mr. Council President.
Thank you. Please add Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Stokes. Councilman Costello, did you sign on to this one? Councilman Costello is co-sponsors. This has been assigned to the Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0479 Property Tax Credit. Low-income employees of the city of Baltimore. For the purpose of establishing a tax credit against the property tax imposed on the principal residences of certain low-income employees of the city of Baltimore. Imposing certain limitations, conditions, and qualifications for credit eligibility, providing for the amount, duration, and administration of the credit, defining certain terms, and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors, Dorsey, President Scott, Burnett, Cohen, Henry, Bullock, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton.
Please add Council Vice President Middleton, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Costello, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilman Stokes, Councilman Schleifer, Councilman Pinkett as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey. That may be a first for you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Council President, and thank you to all my colleagues for co-sponsoring this bill. Thank you all for joining me for a press conference before this meeting tonight, and I want to thank and acknowledge representatives from AFSMI, AFT, and the City Union of Baltimore representing the workers here who make things happen on the ground here in Baltimore City, answering the phones, picking up trash, fixing the streets, you know, doing all the basic stuff that is so often overlooked. These are the people who will benefit from this property tax credit. It's similar to ones that we already offer, in some cases to people who make a hundred thousand dollars or more, and we're talking about creating a tax credit here of twenty-five hundred dollars annually for property owners who are city employees in the lowest paid twenty-five percent. Not one of these people even makes the median income of Baltimore City while working full-time as an employee of the city of Baltimore, performing essential tasks to the, tasks that are essential to the delivery of basic services as a city, as a government. I'm really proud to put this forth, and also to be joined here by former Delegate Bilal Ali, Delegate Stephanie Smith, is she here still? Hello, Delegate Boyce, how are you this evening? Who put forth, Delegate Ali and State Senate incoming President Bill Ferguson put this bill forth in 2018 at my request, and Stephanie Smith picked it up in 2019 and got it over the goal line for the enabling legislation. I'm just really proud to have the opportunity to work at the state level with these folks to make something like this possible here in Baltimore City. I appreciate everybody's support.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee. Before we go any further, I want to officially welcome Delegate Regina Boyce back to City Hall, Delegate, thank you for joining us this evening, and former Delegate Bilal Ali
City Council Bill 19-0480 Zoning Use Standards Neighborhood Commercial Establishments. For the purpose of allowing the limited expansion of a non-residential use into a newly constructed addition to the principal building and conforming and clarifying related provisions. Sponsor, Schleifer.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council.
Oh, please add Councilman Henry as a co-sponsor.
City Council Bill 19-0481 Banning Discrimination Based on Hair Texture and Protective Hairstyles. For the purpose of prohibiting discrimination based on hair texture and protective hairstyles. Sponsors, Stokes, President Scott, Burnett, Cohen, Bullock, Dorsey, Pinkett, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm introducing the Hair Discrimination Bill in response to more and more African-Americans and people of color raising concerns of prejudice and ignorance based on their choice of hairstyle. People of color face discrimination on many levels. A person's hairstyle or preferred hairstyle is a choice if it makes another person uncomfortable, or if it's someone feel textured hair locks or twists are inappropriate or not seen as ideal, well, that's absurd. This country has a dark history of regulating human bodies, and we have to send a clear message to all, to, clear message to all that discrimination of any kind would not be tolerated in Baltimore City. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Please add Councilman Schleifer, Councilwoman McCray, Councilwoman Sneed as co-sponsors, Councilman Costello as a co-sponsor, and Chairwoman Sneed, I would love to see this bill get a very prompt hearing in the Labor Committee. Thank you. This has been assigned to the Labor Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution 19-0185R Informational Hearing, DPW Operations. For the purpose of inviting representatives from DPW, the Department of Finance, and the Office of the Comptroller to explain how DPW evaluates its operating procedures and makes improvements. Sponsors, Stokes, President Scott, Burnett, Cohen, Henry, Bullock, Dorsey, Pinkett, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's just a resolution for DPW, Bureau of Solid Waste, to discuss the comptroller's audit findings, and explain what process has been in place to prevent future financial oversights. Thank you.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Resolution 19-0186R Informational Hearing, 311 and Disparities and Response Time. For the purpose of inviting representatives from 311 Services and the Department of Public Works to appear before the City Council to explain the disparities and response times for 311 calls based on the neighborhood of the caller's complaint, and how to resolve those disparities. Sponsors, President Scott, Burnett, Cohen, Bullock, Dorsey, Pinkett, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton.
Thank you. Baltimore has an equity problem. Residents who request help with things like illegal dumping, broken streetlights, and trash, and vacant properties shouldn't be treated differently based on where they live. We absolutely cannot use zip codes or income to determine which residents are most worthy of city services. Our residents deserve better. The data clearly show that an inequitable city government is an ineffective one. I will continue to hold city government accountable to all residents in every neighborhood across the city. We must continue to embed a framework of equity into the way we do business at a city, and I look forward to having a hearing about this resolution and talking to DPW about how they're going to correct the inequities that have existed in their services. Thank you. Please add Councilman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution 19-0187R Recognizing Vice President Middleton as President of Maryland Association of Counties. For the purpose of recognizing Vice President Sharon Middleton as the new president of the Maryland Association of Counties. Sponsors, President Scott, Burnett, Cohen, Stokes, Henry, Bullock, Dorsey, Pinkett, Clark, Reisinger, Middleton.
Please add, we'll go back for a second, add Councilman Costello as a co-sponsor to 190186R. Thank you. And also add Councilman Costello as a co-sponsor to this resolution, add Councilwoman McCray as a co-sponsor to this resolution. Chair recognizes Councilman Schleifer as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
Mr. President, I move that this bill be immediately adopted.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry. Councilman Schleifer. Vice President Middleton. Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock. Councilman Reisinger. Councilman Costello. Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Sneed. Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you. The eyes have it, this resolution has been approved. Before I recognize the Council Vice President, I think that it was important for the council to do this so that the entire city can see how much our leadership in Baltimore is respected throughout the state of Maryland, and how significant it is to have one of our own lead, the Maryland Association of Counties lead maker over this next year, as they're talking about policies that are going to be impacting the entire state of Maryland. So, Councilwoman, congratulations again, and Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you. Just quickly, I'd like to thank my colleagues and everyone, the phone calls I've been getting from state, federal, just everyone has been just so, just giving me congratulations, and I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I started with the Maryland Association of Counties as basically as soon as I became a council member. There were two former colleagues that encouraged me to be a part, and I've been a part ever since, and I also serve from that on three national associations on their executive boards because of being a part of the Maryland Association of Counties. So, you know, one of my main goals is to show all of the counties around our economic engine, because Baltimore City is still, we have our challenges, but we still are the economic engine of this state. We are our own municipality, and people don't understand that we operate just like a county. So this is the year 2020 for us to, for my colleagues and I to really show a face in Annapolis. There, the delegates and senators are really going to need our help. I got a personal call from Senator Bill Ferguson, which really meant a lot. We're going to partner and do tremendous things together, and again, I welcome my colleagues to be a part of this organization. There is strong support in all of the other counties, and I really want to see some faces of my colleagues to really be a part of this. This is just so important for money and the things that we need in our city, and the things that we need to get basically from the country. So I thank you, Mr. President, for this recognition. I honestly do not take it lightly, and will work hard and continue to represent.
You will know you will. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move we read short titles for the duration of the hearing.
Without objection, short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Consent Calendar. You can find the consent calendar in Section A at the back of the agenda. Without objection, the consent calendar is approved. The consent calendar is approved. Committee Reports. We will now move to bills on the second reader. Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0471 Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities. Effective Date Modification.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Mr. Council President, I'd make a motion that this bill be sent to third reader for final passage on the same day.
Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen. Councilwoman McCray. Councilman Dorsey. Councilman Henry. Councilman Schleifer. Vice President Middleton. Councilman Pinkett. Councilman Burnett. Councilman Bullock. Councilman Reisinger. Councilman Costello. Councilman Stokes. Councilwoman Sneed. Councilwoman Clark.
The eyes have it, and this bill moves to third reader today. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0489 High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Citywide Eligibility for Tax Credit.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on December 11, 2019. Sponsor, Councilman Bill Henry. The committee approved the bill as favorable with an amendment, and the amendments are on council members' desks. I move the committee amendments.
All those in favor approving the amendment say aye. All opposed say nay. Amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, and I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye. All opposed say nay. The motion is, the motion. The motion is, the motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Oh, please note, Councilman, Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Just for the record, I think that, um, Kalen said the 0489, he should have said 0389. Just, I don't know if that matters for the record, but...
Thank you. We'll read it again. Just for the record, that was 0389. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, move invocation of City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advance from second to third reader.
Roll call.
President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Henry, Councilman Schleifer, Vice President Middleton, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Reisinger, Councilman Costello, Councilman Stokes, Councilwoman Sneed, Councilwoman Clark.
The eyes have it, and this bill moves to third reader today. Third reader requiring the invocation of City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advance from second to third reader.
City Council Bill 19-0471 Whistleblower Rights and Responsibilities Effective Date Modification. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0389 High Performance Market Rate Rental Housing Citywide Eligibility for Tax Credit. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader for final passage.
City Council Bill 19-0341 Franchise Baltimore Regional Rapid Transit Systems Sections A and C. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0342 Franchise Central Light Rail. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0384 3302 Edgewood Street, AKA 3500 West Fort Park, Forest Park Avenue. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
Please note, Councilwoman Clark has a no. This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0424 Corrective Bill 2019 General. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0459 City Property Naming the Courthouse East Building to be the Elijah E. Cummings Courthouse. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schle- Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0468 Child First Authority Updating. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Sneed, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. New committee. A memo has been placed on the desks of each member denoting the creation of a new select committee called the Equity and Structure Committee. Bill reassignments. If there is no objection, we will suspend Rule 9 Desk 7 to refer the following ordinance, ordinances read by the clerk to the Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill 19-18, City Council Bill 18-0311 Nicotine Replacement Therapy Products Sale and Distribution. City Council Bill 18-0313 Electronic Smoking Devices.
Thank you. Those bill committees are reassigned. If there is no objection, we will suspend Rule 9-7 to refer the following ordinances read by the clerk to the Equity and Structure Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0470... City Council Bill 19-0470 Exercise of Legislative Powers. City Council Bill 19-0467 Veto's Timing of Override. City Council Bill 19-0442 Equity Assessment and Fiscal Note. Zero, City Council Bill 19-0441 Charter Review Commission. City Council Bill 19-0382 City Administrator. City Council Bill 19-0381 Removal of Elected Officials. City Council Bill 19-0380 Veto's. City Council Bill 19-0379 Ordinance of Estimates. City Council Bill 19-0353 Underground Conduit System Sale Transfer and Franchise permitted. City Council Bill 17-0097 Tenant Legal Assistance Fund.
Thank you. Regular announcements. Uh, Chair recognizes, oh, committee announcement, sorry. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, the Leans Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 19-0463 on February the 5th, 2020 at 1:00 PM in the council chambers. This is a rezoning Block 7762 with lots 001 through 007. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend Rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
The Health Committee will hold a hearing, uh, tomorrow morning, Tuesday, December 17th, 2019, beginning at 9:50 AM here in council chambers for Council Bill 19-0476 Tobacco Distribution Conforming Modifications. Uh, Council Bill 19-0165-R Be More Clean Coordinated Agency Community Cleanup and Maintenance Strategy is being rescheduled. A hearing is currently scheduled to be held on Wednesday, January 15th, 2020, but will be changed to Wednesday, January 22nd, 2020, beginning at 5:00 PM. The Health Committee will also hold a series of legislative oversight hearings, the, on the dates and times as follows. On Tuesday, January 28th, beginning at 10:00 AM, the topic will be aging and chronic disease. On Tuesday, February 11th, 2020, beginning at 10:00 AM, the topic will be obesity, nutrition, and health. On Wednesday, February 12th, 2020, beginning at 5:00 PM, the topic will be opioids, and this will be televised on, on Charm TV. On Tuesday, February 25th, beginning at 10:00 AM, the, there will be a discussion on tobacco products. On Tuesday, March 10th, 2020, beginning at 10:00 AM, Legislative Oversight 19-0067 Zero Waste Planning and Less Waste Plan will reconvene. The first hearing was held on November 21st, 2019. The committee also plans to discuss matters surrounding sewage backups at the hearing. On Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, beginning at 5:00 PM, we will discuss Medicare for All. On Tuesday, March 24th, beginning at 10:00 AM, we will discuss healthcare access. On Wednesday, April 8th, 2020, beginning at 5:00 PM, we will discuss sexual and reproductive health. And on Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, beginning at 10:00 AM, we will discuss technology and healthcare. All of the hearings are open to the public.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Executive Department's Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, January 15th at 10, 10:00 AM to review the following nominations. Employees Retirement System Board of Trustees will be Patricia Roberts. The same day, uh, the Civil Review Board will hold a hearing for Tiffany Wingate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more committee announcements on this side? Council Vice President Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear Bill Number 19-0440 Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, 10:00 AM here in council chambers. The Acquisition of Property Temporary Construction Easements and Permanent Easements. Also, on Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, we will hear Bill Number 19-0448 at 10:01 AM here in council chambers. Sale of Property 801 Bradish Avenue. And also, on Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, we will, we will hear Bill Number 19-0469 at 10:02 AM here in council chambers. Release of Easement 10 South Howard Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Scheifler.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing tomorrow night, December 17th, at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers on the recent, uh, series of fires in southwest Baltimore.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity and Structure Committee will hear a number of charter amendments on Wednesday, January 15th, starting at 5:00 PM here in the council chambers. At 5:00 PM, we will hear Bill 19-0378 Ethics Board Administration and Staff. At 5:01, we will hear Bill 19-0379 Charter Amendment Ordinance of Estimates. At 5:02, we will hear Bill 19-0380 Charter Amendment Veto's. At 5:03, we will hear Bill 19-0381 Charter Amendment Removal of Elected Officials. At 5:04, we will hear Bill 19-0382 Charter Amendment City Administrator. At 5:05, we will hear Bill 19-0441 Charter Amendment Charter Review Commission. At 5:06, we will hear Bill 19-0467 Charter Amendment Veto's and Timing of Override. And at 5:07, we will hear City, the Council Bill 19-0470 Charter Amendment Exercise of Legislative Powers. It is not the intention, Mr. President, to conclude the public discussion on any of these charter amendments on that evening, but we want to make certain that it is understood this will be the first of a series of public hearings in which the public will be allowed to testify as to their, uh, opinions on all of these charter amendments that are being considered by the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, regular announcements, regular announcements. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, like to request floor privileges for, um, a sorority and fraternity that are visiting here.
Zetas, yes.
Yes.
Uh, without objection, uh, floor privileges will be given to the members of the Zetas.
Uh, may we have the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Inc., and Phi Beta Sigma fraternity? We have two representatives here, Lisette Colazo Dingell and Alfred Jackson.
Hello.
And you have the floor.
To our Baltimore City Council President Brandon Scott...
Ma'am, you can turn that way so they can see you on TV.
Excuse my back. And to Vice President Sharon Green Middleton and to all the council persons, I bring you greetings on behalf of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Our sorority was founded January 16th, 1920, and on January 16th, 2020, we will be celebrating 100 years. My name is Lisette Colazo Dingell, and I am the immediate past president of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated Beta Alpha Tau Zeta Chapter. Many of our ideals are very important to us, but one that's really important is community service. So, we're here for community service, social action. We want to get information on how to promote community action and to promote citizens to get engaged and get involved in our communities. And I'll pass the mic to my brother Phi Beta Sigma.
Thank you so well. Hey, good evening. Make sure everyone is still wide awake, because this is very important. Thank you very much for allowing us to have this particular experience. I'm a member of Phi Beta Sigma fraternity incorporated. I am the president. My name is Alfred Jackson. We're in the city. We're located right on Greenmount Avenue where we call the heart of Baltimore City. We are definitely the advocates of trying to do something as far as community service and doing something for our community. We have a membership of over 140 brothers, all college-educated members, and all from Baltimore City, and we're just here to say we are an important resource, underutilized, if I may say. We're here, we want to do something, we want to be an impact, so reach out to us. Mary Pat is our favorite council person on the side of the 14th district. So, thank you very much for all your years of support, but just thank you for welcoming the, the sorority and fraternity into your home, uh, into this office, and we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we'd like to, uh, invite, uh, city council persons over to the room right across the hall for some refreshments and hopefully some dialogue. Thank you.
Will be there.
Thank you. And just a shout out to thank Zeta Phi Beta Sorority for the wonderful partnership that you continue to do with their, uh, senior center in the center of, uh, Park Heights. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
To, thank you, Mr. Council President. Um, I just want to thank you for, um, allowing my constituent, Mr. John Billy, to come and present in the showcase today, and I want to again just thank Mr. Billy for coming here today, um, and for his dedication to making sure his story continues to be, be told, um, and to his 61 years of dedication and his marriage to his wife Shirley. Uh, I'm truly privileged to get to represent them, uh, in my district, and I want to thank him again so much for coming down here today. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, permission to extend floor privileges to my special guest.
Without objection, floor privileges will be given. Floor privileges are given to Councilman Cohen's guest.
Baltimore is as great as it is because of its people, uh, and we are excited in southeast Baltimore to have a brand-new Kiwanis Club. The Kiwanis Club is one of the oldest serving clubs in the country. It specializes in service to children, to neighborhoods, they do cleanups, and I am excited that this gentleman right here had the vision to create a new one here in Baltimore and that it is being internationally recognized. So, with that, um, to Mr. Justin and the Kiwanis Club of Canton/Fells Point, in recognition of being recognized as an official club of the Kiwanis International Organization and serving the Baltimore community, the entire membership extends best wishes on this memorial, memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented to you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I recognize Council Vice President Middleton, I just ask to see honor a moment of silence for the now 327 victims of homicide in Baltimore City and all that we've lost to the opioid crisis as well. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Uh, on a more positive note, um, and, and indeed, we need to pray the hardest as we can right now in Baltimore, we're not going to be back in session until 2020. And so, I'd like to take this occasion, if I may, first of all, uh, he's not here to come onto the floor, but I know he's watching, my husband Joe. Today is his birthday, and so I wanted to wish him a happy birthday. And I know he's watching because, you know, the Ravens are not on television at this moment. Um, and then to say, um, I have great confidence in the leadership of the city right now of this council. Having worked with this council, I have great hope for our future, and I think 2020 is a real turnaround time and that the people sitting right here that I've been honored to be colleagues with, I'm not leaving yet. It's a year yet.
We were getting a little worried.
But, um, I'm talking about 2020 and how I look forward to it. I think it's a, a big change over, changing year across the country, but certainly I feel it in Baltimore for a lot of reasons, but mainly working with this council and being with so many young people in the community. There's a lot of hope, there's a lot of energy and, and dedication and, um, of all the councils that I've worked with, and I say this all the time, this is certainly the outstanding one in terms of dedication, caring about people, and diligence. And I've been, I'm honored to be part of this council in another, and for another year. Um, but this is the year coming up that I've been looking forward to. I just feel it in my bones, I see it around me, I see it on the streets and in the neighborhoods. We're about to, it's like the Titanic's turning around, and yeah, it takes a while and it makes a lot of waves, but it surely is, and we're headed in the right direction. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
The next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, January 13th, 2020 at 5:00 PM. May we have a moment of silence for the now 327 victims and families of homicide and also victims and families of the opioid epidemic.
There been no further business. This concludes the 74th meeting of the 74th... This concludes the 74th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Have a Joyous Kwanzaa.